Without doing something like that over a period of time, you're going to get infestation in that. I can relate to that property like here's a big tree in the back. I think sometime around walking around. It was pruned by TPN several times over periods of, oh, I don't know, thirty years maybe. Past couple of years, it started dropping deep, dead, glims out of the tunnel, all like that. When you took the tree down, of course, the power of its bedevils and rot and everything else. So they got down on the base, which made it seven and a half feet across with some water. Well, I think what you want to do now, and I would suggest, is coat the ends of where you've pruned and prevent that infestation. Because if that happens, it's going to be a disaster. That's something we can pass on to shade tree community as well as state. You have a question? Thank you. All right. We were paying invoices and vouchers, that's we, I guess. We have one hundred and thirty-one thousand, six hundred and ninety-four dollars and nineteen cents in our general fine, and five thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and sixty cents in our group office. I make a motion and will pay those bills. Exactly.
Reiner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Rosas?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes.
Okay. There it is. Whereas our nation was conceived from July 4th, seventeen seventy-six, Declaration of Independence, which includes the statement that we hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, and that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas, on July 1st, eighteen sixty-three, President Abraham Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation, setting in motion the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas the Civil War entered with the surrender of General Lee on April 9th, eighteen sixty-five, and whereas on June 9th, nineteen, eighteen sixty-five, General Gordon Ranger arrived at Galveston Bag, Texas, with the Union troops and announced that people of Texas are informed that according to the proclamation from the executive of the United States, all slaves are free. Whereas in recent weeks, across our nation and the world, people have joined to demand and act to systematic racism and oppression of African-Americans. And whereas Juneteenth commemorates African-American freedom and celebrates the fundamental truth that all people are created equal and that liberty is a right endowed by our Creator, and remind each of us that all precious promises of freedom, equality, and opportunity which are at the core of the American dream, and now therefore bear resolve that mere part of the region and that council members of the county of North Carolina, California, Pennsylvania, and nearby, June 19th, twenty twenty, is Juneteenth. I encourage all residents to become more aware and significant of the celebration of African-American history and heritage of our nation. Do we need a vote on that? Mr. Rosas?
Oh. I'd like to make motions to accept the resignation of Derek Zinski due to employment abandonment.
Reese?
Yes.
Rosas?
Yes.
Hester?
Yes. Non-Union Employee Discipline law, I'm going to weight this to you.
Okay.
Kurt Mac talked about it over earlier today, and it's really guilty of it.
Okay. What happened is that at our last executive session, we discussed the employee disciplinary policy procedure and updating the same case. Which because it feels with an employee, we are allowed to discuss it in such a manner. However, we really didn't give much detail as to what we wanted to see, or you didn't, as to what you wanted to see in this policy. So what I did was I took the existing policy and I took out a couple of things that were repetitive, I added some things, and I'll run through it with you fairly quickly now and see if you guys have any questions or things you want to bring up. The first thing we need is you'll see that in the top paragraph of the article, it states that this is a policy relative to discipline of the employees. Oral written warnings and progressive or exclusive discipline of opportunity, employee dismissal may be an apparent kind of appropriate under certain circumstances. So previously, it just said progressive discipline. The reason I added the word exclusive discipline in there is that there may be offenses from which we don't want to follow. First goes verbal warning, then a written warning, then a suspension, then a term. So you can skip ahead, okay, as fit or necessary due to the perceived importance of the punishment applied with disciplinary. We also represent the right to terminate the employee without the parent's immediate dismissal without any aspect of the disciplinary process, however, we'll get into that later. The Group One offenses procedure for discipline would be the first effect to be oral reprimand, the second effect to be a written warning. We have a list of Group One offenses. Neglect of duty, failure to report injury, habitual carelessness and reckless discipline, trips or ghosts, leaving a assigned work area without knowledge and permission, disregard for safety comfort of other workers, violation of established safety rules, excessive tardiness or excessive absence, miscoordination and/or improper or inadequate orders, disorderly or unlawful conduct while working within the city, lying or deceitful conduct while working within the city, and release of any unofficial information. Now, if you go to Section Two, right, the Group Two offenses, we had discussed adding basically a middle group between the first and the third group of offenses, such that there could be a suspension without a necessary termination, or there could be a suspension in the lieu of a written warning. So what we said in this Group Two offenses is that any Group One offense, the circumstances of which are deemed by a supervisor or higher-ranking city official to exceed the propriety of a high-stempered Group One, but which does not rise to the level of Group Three, or a third of a recurrence of a Group One offense by an employee, okay? Any of those would qualify for suspension. Then we have the Group Three offenses, which are, all offenses would be disciplined by immediate dismissal, and there is a caveat to that. But the consumption of intoxicants or illegal toxins, alcohol or illegal drugs, failure to submit to a blood or alcohol test, deliberate destruction, theft or removal of city property, sexual or discriminatory harassment. Sexual harassment is just that, discriminatory harassment, harassment relatives of race, sex, religion, national origin, color, sexual orientation, age, disability, all of which are federally protected classes. Impulsive actions including verbal and or violence, gross insubordination, misrepresenting your reimbursement record like time sheets or travel records or personal gain, or removal or release, including verbal release of confidential information. With Group Three, my understanding is that the council wished to have a full procedure such that any employee whose employment is terminated relative to any offense listed during the third group, shall have the right to appeal to the termination to a private hearing of the council, or to a public hearing of the council, and have said employees so desire to comply with the same. We also have, it's my understanding, that once a satisfactory policy is breached, we will go over it with the employee, have them sign dated application. Any questions?
Well, if there's anything we can get him to you, and we can either have it on the page or we can...
Exactly.
The only thing I questioned like the last time, we should have a chain of improvement. The chain of discipline progression is there, but I'm thinking there would possibly should have in counseling before the first oral rep, before the oral rep, uh, reprimand. And that can be official, but something in your folder. But it just, the reason we're doing this is so we have a paper, it don't bring anything up. And the other thing is the timeframe on, if the discipline occurs within a certain timeframe, it's progressive then, right? See, if the oral warning, if it happens again within six months, it automatically moves up. If it's after a certain amount of time, it gets removed from your record. And then you start fresh. Exactly. Or that. Exactly. Right? That's the two things I have.
That's the suggested time period, like a year?
Well, what was done in our end of it is an oral warning, I think, for ninety days or six months, it's up to the, it's up to the discipline coordinator at the time of that, because you're going to have a disciplinary hearing. Almost have to have a disciplinary hearing, whether it's party unit or not, you have discipline, you let the person go. You got to give him his time to speak. And then it can be decided upon by council, however you want to do it, but have them fixed in post of the board. Like a written warning might be six months or a year. That doesn't happen, because if you're up to a written warning, you're one step away from being suspended, so it's a repetitive action.
You're saying Rosas is on the page? I think everyone has heard of it. A lot of people have been writing it.
Yeah, it would happen to be writing, I don't say, I don't know, I don't know, or program in me, you know, I can't make a chance, depending on what it is, whatever. Whether it's a legalizing, and then you have a class that says it does something, and then it's a nine day, and quite a month, and I do the same thing all, start over, and also extend the time.
Now, maybe, or was any industries, agents on that, just to see what the timeline is? Well, I like the idea of these, or on their way back to Group Three, this is the one time for them to use it all.
First rate.
I don't know about suspensions, are we going to do with pay, without pay?
The, I think that would be up, well, I think maybe we decide that now, or we can leave it up to disciplinary and time of defense. I was thinking without pay, but we can certainly do whatever.
The only thing that would be a question, Brad and I had a discussion on this just this morning. I don't know if civil services involved with these non-uniform employees, I don't know what the grade is, but any discipline for a non-uniform employee, if they're suspended, it's more likely that they're suspended. They've got nothing, something wrong with them, suspended from work, there's nothing that we have to worry about being pseudo or something like that.
Right.
That's up to councilmen and businesses.
So unsuspenched, we would be without that, what we're going with.
Yeah. And then what is the timeframe for a suspension, so it's obviously a four?
Well, and that, I didn't put that, because there, again, there may be situations where you maybe want to make it a week or two weeks, or, you know what I mean, to fit the crime. So I didn't make that, something I can, if working.
Well, no, I think I had one, during a staff description, HR is part of the whole thing, so it can be suspension as determined by the HR.
Right.
Change of the statement, using first offense, and the second offense, maybe go from one day to three days, and then the third time is termination, something like that.
It's also a discretion?
Yes.
Well, I had something to give, if you want to give them the right to be on suspension.
But again, up to you, but I only gave them the right for Group Three, but how are we just...
I, you know, even the termination, I mean, it's, but there, actually, there's no bargaining with this stuff, there's no, and I don't think civil services are all there. Kind of just like, they want to be processed, and the Ospreys, and that would come to campus, right?
Right.
Yeah.
And that's why I limited it to the Group Three offenses, simply to avoid the investigation in full hearings, such that I think that as part of any investigation, prior to a two-week suspension, obviously, somebody's going to get the other side. That's what I was...
So we'll just, I mean, the changes, then come back?
Yeah, what I was going to suggest is I make the changes, email them out to everybody, so you guys have it ahead of time, this one kind of snuck out home, it's all I did recently, but I'll make the changes, get them emailed out to everybody, and we can, you know, make whatever other necessary changes.
Yeah, I do, I want to say just for the suspension, that I would, for my, in my mind, I would like to have in the policy arranged, that it goes from one to three days, I think a two-week suspension, is a pretty severe punishment on somebody, that's their livelihood, right? And so I think also because of that, before you suspend somebody without pay, you know, maybe for a day or whatever, because not, you know, in extensive period of time, I don't know how you would have looked at slicing dice it, but it's affecting their ability to provide for their family. So, and the opportunity to provide matters for consideration to the disciplinary board or whatever, I don't know how, I, this is the first I heard about a disciplinary hearing or disciplinary board?
That's just a...
That's a...
The council? Okay. And but for, they got the discipline coordinator then, in my capacity, that's...
And we would be with council?
I didn't put that in that board in here, but, yeah, I mean, I think I'm the first situation for it.
Okay.
And usually what it is, you're right, you shouldn't track something up. Maybe it's counseling, oral warning, written warning, what, a written, but then it's one day, three days, you're gone. If you go through five stages, within a certain timeframe, then you're not...
Yeah, and I think having it written, then it doesn't matter if I'm the receiver, somebody else is, then it will be implemented the same way across the board, the matter of who the employee is.
Minister J. Russell? Next, they think?
Okay. So, this is the first reading for Bill number twenty twenty dash ten, Quality of Life Ticketing. This is new legislation. The purpose of this legislation is to permit a citizen to pay a ticket rather than receive a citation for certain code violations. The benefit to the citizen includes that it removes the burden of the time-consuming court hearing process that you go through for a citation. And it also, but it also preserves the right to dispute the ticket, and also preserves full due process of law for the person who appealed the ticket. It can be disputed in much the same manner as a parking ticket. We choose the subject violations, those that are kind of most immediate concerns to neighbors, for weeds and grass, if they're too high, for a collection of rubbish or garbage in their property, and also for snow and ice removed on their sidewalk. The violation, they'll get a ticket, but they must also correct the violation within twenty-four hours. And they need to pay the ticket within seventy-two hours. After seventy-two hours, the ticket fine doubles. And then also, after seventy-two hours, the city may correct the violation and charge the costs of that, correct that you are due to property owner. This will not apply to declared nuisance property. Those nuisance properties, they won't continue to get citations for violations, because that's the stage of the process that they're in. First offense tickets would be twenty-five dollars, additional offenses within a twelve-month period starts at, will be issued at fifty dollars. So if it's the first offense, and you get your ticket for twenty-five dollars, after seventy-two hours, it goes to fifty. If it's your second offense on the same violation within a twelve-month period, you off the back get a ticket for fifty dollars, you can double the one hundred if you didn't pay it within seventy-two hours.
You feel the ticket's wrong?
And you can't appeal the ticket, yes?
Yeah, just add on, so if this isn't anything new, kind of going through it, if not, if it's new, ticketing for or not, pardon anything, it's more of just making it easier for neighbors to have the, it would help save the issue, instead of, hey, typically saving a week, it's gonna be driving eight hours, we've done it forty-four hours, just a little faster process. Are we...
Part two, enforcement, for all?
Yeah. And we talked, Joel Craig, I think we put in there that the police could enforcement, but...
Yes, we did. We gave a caveat that if the police followed a necessary, a certain situation, they could use this, but the normal enforcement would be to...
Yeah, example would be snow stops on a Friday night when cars pass, a severe area that needs to be shoveled and no one shoveling it, you guys remember, in that process going? Primarily be go-dogs.
Well, my assessment was, if you're on a call, at house, or a child, or something else, and you see a ton of garbage there, and it's something, then you think to do that, take care of that situation, you better go to a child or something, you can do it. I mean, that's just something that I had. But you have the ability, but not the necessity of enforcement.
I mean, enforcement, just that, right? You're frantic, you see why you're doing something, just pass the one... Yeah.
Perfect.
That's exactly what I talked about, I had, discussed with the council, we had before about go-dogs, that after our ability to protect them, which we still have a problem, and that's another problem. So you have a motion, except... You do a question?
Reiner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Rosas?
Yes.
Okay. Next is the first reading of Bill number twenty twenty dash eleven, Shade Trees. This is a repeal and replace of ordinance number seven sixty-seven, Shade Tree Commission, which was adopted May tenth, nineteen sixty-five, and ordinance number seven seven four, Trees, which was adopted in September thirteenth, nineteen sixty-five. So it combines all the tree-related provisions into one ordinance. The sections are as follows. We have a more extensive list of definitions. We also have the Shade Tree Commission establish its responsibilities, its advisory capacity, and their responsibility to review plans for subdivisions and land development. Permits are required for all work on shade trees, that was including pruning, spraying, and up to, including taking it down. Prohibited activities, or any activities that would cause harm to shade trees, very similar to what was in the previous ordinance, about attaching anything to them or causing harm incidental to construction. We describe trees in the public land or in the public right-of-way, the requirements for those trees, air provisions, and notice to remove or remedy any problems with those trees, and liability for damage. Trees on private property, there's a provision to determine that a tree is a public nuisance, if part of that tree is infringing on the public land or right-of-way, and it is a danger to public safety. Then there is the arboretural tree work performance requirements, and that the contractor will be, shall be required to possess insurance to cover any damages that may occur with bringing a tree down. And there is an exemption for private owners who are taking their own trees down or moving off large ridge. Requirements for compliance with the zoning ordinance, and then there are shade tree fees, such as for the permits. Any fees received are to be used for reimbursement of the city or the contractor for work that has to be done under the provision of this article, and for the enforcement and provision, and implementation of this article. And then the penalty is the standard penalty that we have gone for in others, where a violation in summary offense that would go through the magistrate, who has the option of fines up to a thousand dollars, or ninety days in prison, plus prosecution, quote unquote.
Looking for a motion?
Any questions like this? I do want to point out that Mayor Carl Loeb told me today some concerns he had about it, and so I just wanted to explain with the word that he said. He was concerned about the burden on the city, regarding especially the requirement for the permits, processing permits, doing the inspections, et cetera. So he had a concern that it's a lot more burdensome for the code, the code office. And then his other was, concern, main concern was the burden on homeowners to get a permit to do everything, before it was a permit, I believe, just to take a tree down, and now the permit is required for pruning, spraying, and also taking the tree down. So this concern was if a homeowner was required to get a permit to do those things, perhaps that would be a barrier to them actually taking care of it themselves.
I think for, if it's on their property, they didn't have to do anything. I live down in the street...
But it's still that way, safety and...
These are all in the shade, this is only shade trees.
In the public right-of-way.
If this is on your private property, and it then goes over onto the street or the sideline, that's where this comes into play. And I want to point out that we spent a lot of time on this, Joel spent a lot of time on this too, and we took basically ordinances, especially from Allentown, that is a designated tree city, for the Rousey, and we worked with it. The whole idea is not to penalize, it's simply to give us mechanisms to, to deal with these problems, help with the trees, and again, public safety. So, I mean, I don't see this as anything draconian toward the, the landowners, it's here to protect the city, and in fact, what we're hoping to do is to increase the canopy within the city, because we're wealthy short actually in the number of trees that we should have within the city. So I believe that we've done our due diligence on this, and I would ask that the council strongly consider this, because I think we've really gone over it, Joel has looked for any pitfalls in there, we had a very substance meeting together. I feel very confident in the way it's, my...
I do just want to clarify, the tree's on public, on private property, so the trunk, the roots, it grew up out of private property, that still is an owner's responsibility to evade any, any danger to the public safety. And so, but they don't require a permit to do anything to that tree. They only need a permit to do something to a shade tree that's in the public right-of-way. Okay.
That's...
Well, two other things I had, one, one are, I'm sorry, look, I understand there's someone, someone behind me, I'm sorry. Well, just real quickly, I put the permit to free, that's one thing. And the other thing is, there's no cost for any citizen. The other thing is that I think the idea behind requiring a permit to free, et cetera, was exactly what Mr. Bub was talking about earlier, if you don't want the job done, I'm telling you, because it'll result in a dead tree. So that's all I wanted to...
I have a question. We have, we have a tree in our neighborhood, it is definitely on private property, but every time we do this, it rashes, it causes dangers to the other people's property. Ensure something will pay for it, say, act of danger. The man who owns this property, as he told his tenants, do not leave your kids out in the yard, I will be responsible. I'm going to... No, we didn't.
Yeah, we went out and looked at that tree a couple times, and it's, it's a civil issue, I think you and I had to, about it, Joel, where it's, it's not in the public right-of-way, the tree is not...
Not in the public...
It's on private property entirely, so it's a civil between you and the other property.
The tenant should have paid rent to live there, can't bring your home back, yes, but that's a still dying tree, that's, that's a safety issue, that's what we try to go where you are.
So, I think from an insurance standpoint, where, where an insurance company can say, until falls, nothing you can do.
The damage will come to hell, it'll already end, you know?
Insurance companies won't do that, I don't believe, I mean, I don't...
Active nature, but...
Whatever it takes, it's covered. It's not like they have wrong turns.
Robert, our question just crawls up, you were treating your backyard, but it's a dead tree, it knows it's a danger. We had discussed more than less about the fall, the, the falls of trees in the neighbor yard. We have the right to think, correct, probably like Mr. Brooks was saying?
On private property, I don't believe so. Now, the other homeowner, the standards would have the ability to sue that person, and typically their insurance would, if it fell there, but I think we...
I remember, two years, but you probably answered questions about that a bunch of times, every time it was a bit of a fall, ground, and so...
Every time it was a bit of a fall or a ground, it's, that's civil. We'd like to tell you it can happen, it's obviously a danger, but.
Well, I mean, I, I think I can inter partially in that section forty four oh six regarding trees on private property. That's actually about trees going on private property, but that overhang or interfere with use on a street, highway, avenue, or public right of way. So I think that's as far as we can go as a city in protecting the public from the tree on private property. Because we can do, we can protect the city and those are, they're a public nuisance, actually, we can do both. But only if they have an effect on the public streets, avenues, sidewalks, wherever we're.
Any tree on private property can affect. Right of way, public right of way.
Correct.
Now we have something.
So that answers your follow up question. That's the problem.
The third thing is that if that tree goes over in the neighbor's yard, it's a risk. That tree can't be thrown by that neighbor.
Correct. Yes. We actually ran into that number at Dustin County. The guy actually trimmed one half that's on his side. That side of the tree is completely bald. That was, that's legal and he paid for it. He got half the tree.
But I don't think they can put like a tree over.
No, I don't think they can put a tree in the yard. Have a fist against.
They own the tree, you know.
Ours is only the public right of way, that's.
Precious?
Yes.
I can start the, start a little bit. Right there?
Yes.
Kind of figured. All right. The next issue or, um, or bill for reading and screening, I gotta find it, is, oh, offenses against public safety. And what happened with this is that the mayor repressed some older ordinances and realized that our offenses against public safety ordinance is way, way, way out of date. And does not coincide with virtually any of the, uh, laws of Commonwealth Pennsylvania at this time. So what we did was I rewrote it, um, and I made it coincide with the laws of Commonwealth Pennsylvania concerning weapons. And just in a general way, what I would say is that our, our current ordinance, what we have, says nobody can carry concealed weapon, period. Doesn't say you can carry concealed weapon with a permit, but let's say what you did is way out there. Um, it talks about bowie knives and different things. So we updated the concealed weapons, uh, portion to allow the carrying of this core, or even revolver, concealed carry permit. Um, due to the issue, we, uh, again, um, did the same thing as the state, saying never conceal a rifle or shotgun or grasshoppers or switchblade knife. Sales switchblade knives are prohibited. Again, that's the same as the state. Possession of dangerous or deadly weapons. Um, basically, nothing here is changed, shall be controlled for men to be carrying of any type of gun or any law purpose. And the forward prohibition shall not be, the sheriffs or deputies, possible, as far as maybe in some, partial or any law, for example, for carrying or wearing weapons, if it's not necessary. Now, the, the next three offenses deal with things that are not necessarily state statute. One is sales to intoxication. Sales to intoxication persons with minors. The, obviously a minor cannot purchase firearm, however, um, under this, what we are proposing for the city, no one shall sell, load, or furnish a weapon which uses any explosive substance. Any person under the influence of alcohol or any narcotic drug or stimulant would be present. Um, or to a minor under the age, being, years of age, except when it was simply allowed by law.
A weapon.
Yeah.
Set, it's a power.
No.
So that's not.
That is like. Nope. Um, it, it's a weapon in which any explosive substance can be used, so it's a firearm. Um, forfeiture of weapons, every person convicted, finally, some section shall forfeit the city, such dangerous or deadly weapon. Um, that is outside of the state statute, the state doesn't define how, what happens if you gun. And I'm getting to the reason that we're doing that. The, uh, again, it's only a part of conviction, but at this time, we have a virtual warehouse of firearms. And they're sitting there, you know, wasting away, I guess I'd say. Um, we put in a new section for disposition of confiscated firearms, which allows the chief of police or the city, where the deputy needs to hold the same till a finding of guilt. And upon holding the same for a period exceeding two years after finalization of any criminal prosecution or civil requirement, he can dispose of in the aforementioned fashion meeting through public sale, destroying the same or any other lawful deed.
Uh, I have a question about what happens if you take a firearm for some reason. Like when it's all said and done, there was no prosecution that, uh, does that people go back to take that firearm?
This only applies to conviction. Only if they're convicted. And it's two years after conviction. So first they gotta be convicted and then two years later, if they still haven't come, after they're like, so let's say they're convicted, sentenced. After the sentence is over, they still have a couple of years after their sentence is over. We're saying the gun has been abandoned.
They have two years to come.
After they're off of, something they have a long period of time, and that's only convicted. Right. If they're locked, now certainly they may not be locked because whatever they convicted of. Um, but that's that. The report treatment of wounds in coincide with state laws, throwing of missiles, really falls under the sort of the conduct, I would think, for the state. But here we're specifically designing it, they're combining it as throwing stones, snowballs, or other physical, kind of vehicle or building. Um, bonfires, we talked about, nobody should make a bonfire on any private or public street without permission. Or any other places in the city without permission of the chief of police. For the purposes of this ordinance, a bonfire would be defined as a fire access of five square feet. So everybody can have their, our place is their own. But, uh, nobody allowed a bonfire within the city, non-tribal, unless it's permitted specifically by the chief of police. And then there is these false alarm, um, fire order, ambulance, anybody that intentionally sets off a false alarm could also be prosecuted.
Do, did this ordinance have fireworks? Because I remember seeing on the agenda of my first draft, did fireworks were all things.
I took it out because there was, uh, we have fireworks, there's a whole fireworks in, in the state of Bethlehem.
Uh.
Yeah.
Okay, so you just needed it in more research.
Well, no, I removed it because the state of Bethlehem has, specifically has four laws rules regarding fireworks that they change.
Okay, so what, what are the, because we have people coming now, and we have, this is a compromise, we have fireworks displayed.
Right.
To attack the city.
Right.
So what, it's not allowed?
Well, the, let me answer this one. Number one, if we take it out of this ordinance, we're not in the business of telling people anything about fire, you know, fireworks. Except that, the police can enforce the state statute, which is running in fact. The, except that, there are also rules within the city and other ordinance regarding within so many feet of a occupied building within certain timeframe, that those are still working on that.
Order is taken in city ordinance. That's the state.
The state, I have all of it, it's, I see it.
Yes.
I have all of it, I just told you. There is, there was in less states.
Is that, I guess, I, I got a lot of complaints already. Fireworks also, you know, hours. So what, what is allowed?
Right, pretty much, under section ninety four oh one, entitled seventy two. Uh, pretty much everything you're selling now is, it's all legal.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not, it's legal, they can sell it, they can move it. The only probably major thing that would have us be able to enforce this is consumer fireworks within a hundred fifty feet of an occupied city. Pretty much covers the whole city, because you're not gonna be able to shoot at an apartment a hundred fifty feet. However, it doesn't, it's still, you know, everybody's liable where they might piece things off, they can still be cited, but it's a hundred dollars, it's up to a hundred dollar pocket. That's it, more or no less. Uh, I know it's a big problem right now, this is the end of the year, now for about a week after the fourth of July, we get everybody to the fireworks place and that. You know, it's ordinance, it's eleven o'clock. I just saw the people, the manpower go around to be chasing around people to come by. And I feel, I mean, I understand, I have a dog at home.
Yeah.
My dog goes crazy, it's already pretty much, got, it's running through the house. Uh, it's not, it's not, nothing, it's just so tough when we're dealing with, you know, I was talking to, you know, lots of other people, you know, we've got work in the process. They don't just stop, like, we're working on those things. And it's, you know, people get upset because we're not Johnny on the spot to be, they're shooting off fireworks, we've gotta be there. It's just tough. Just trying to, we just want people to be on the spot, that's all.
As long as we know that whatever the state departments are, uh, online or something, that just gonna.
I was actually gonna make that suggestion, I have them at my office. One night, I was having a jody and we have, put all the website and everything so that everybody knows exactly what we are.
We had also one, Joseph, I wonder. You wanna listen to me, I mean, trust me. I can speak for myself. I had just had a car, maybe, and the curb marks are all over the car. Uh, at my condo, my cookhouse, because the day we set the wall, coming right down, uh, the plastic, I guess when they shoot them all, but they feel almost like metal, like a bursted, uh, perimeter or something. When they come down, they're real hard, they're real brittle. You know, he's doing it, but not, not that quick. Well, I'll make, first, except they have a. I'm concerned about these fireworks too. Why don't they make a wall like they do in the Halloween trick or treat or the Friday weird or.
I don't, I agree, I think you should, sure, but I, the state statute, the state statute. Usually it's like.
Memorial Day, Labor Day, there's fireworks.
Does, does, does the state statute have a time of year for your fireworks?
That, that's where we're actually concerned, we can't, we can't. The only thing you can enforce is a hundred, roughly, the biggest rule we have was that, again. You're looking at, yeah, it's anywhere in the city, but now you're looking at Hootshaw Hall. You're gonna go to a house, so you get there, they have, they're pointing fingers, they're, they're. We're back in square one. Just want people to be responsible, like, this is, unfortunately. This year it started, usually starts, it starts, they ask, it's not asking for more, it's not a order this year, people are gonna cancel. Go get beat home, or call that. Yeah, so you're gonna have from now until four, the audience is gonna get probably.
At least put that up and see. That be something that could, yeah, that would force.
We're not out.
I'm saying if, if that becomes, obviously we'll have that conversation at some point.
I don't think so, because it's a criminal, uh, yeah.
But again, of course, the state statute. And we're not allowed to put anything in there because the state has that, so we can't.
Well, that's not true. That, that's incorrect, that's what I mean. Um, to be clear, you can put any limitation on the want, it's not a constitutional right to use fireworks, okay? The reason we removed them from this policy is because they're not weapons, okay? Um, and there is a state statute dealing directly with them. But if the city wants to prohibit or whatever, they're allowed to do that. It's just gonna be very, very difficult to implement.
I mean, when Chief Ferris asks, you gotta be responsible as the person doing it, it's like, you gotta be on the spot when they're fighting off, like, you said, by the time they get there, it's easy to chase it.
Well, we're committing a timeframe, like, not that date, period, thirty days from, like, before, before their, right, before it starts. I, my, my, my rule of thumb is always the week after, before it's done, you do the summer celebration. It's usually the fireworks for the city, I usually used to say, guys, you're, you know, authors use fresh judgment. After that, we're gonna start really trying to crack down, only because it's over, it's, it's time to be on fire. Again, it's so tough, you just, that's a.
With the, the changes that the state made, the ones that you shoot up in the air, now the.
And it's all fire.
Yeah, because all of that stuff is now, it used to not be, like, you could only do the ground displays.
Right.
So, and to me, if something's doing a ground display in May, is that an issue? So, putting a sound there around them, right, before there was.
Something around, you know, because they'll be, it's not, it's all.
That's what, that's what I expect. It's gonna be a next year issue, this year.
I think we might want to run, see what's out there.
Last night, there were about thirty people crowded around one or four long street. There were fireworks right in the middle of the street there, intersection there.
My officer, right, my officer addressed them before they, they.
Yeah, exactly, and they started their own, the bomb, it's. But we're not gonna bring anything together to do, obviously, it's nineteen forty four, so I think that's a, a feature. Let's explore it for next year, it's too late at this point. Uh, but no matter what, past this, we can always imagine fireworks, whenever we come back in.
Uh, well, I would strongly suggest that you do a separate fireworks limit, since this deals with weapons.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a question, acceptance. Number four, second.
Hi, Scott.
Yes.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes. Yes. Sort of did that, was originally on, this is against the powers to work approached by these tenants about fireworks displaying on, I believe, this almost first, I've never seen.
It was on the agenda, I was researching some information on that, uh, as to where they want to set them home from. It's just near the wetlands. So getting some answers from DCNR about whether or not they're certified with education based on where they want to set them home from.
Okay, so that'll be next.
Next on the, uh, agenda is a letter of support requested from the Central Sasquatch Riverboat Society. They are making an application for spot one C three status. And, um, they are organizing, organizing to raise money to acquire and operate a one hundred and twenty passenger riverboat seasonally on Lake Augusta. It was planned to lure it at Sugarlimi State Park Arena. It would provide educational, a venue for educational, recreational, and special events. They have, uh, as part of their application packet, they requested a letter of support from the city of Sudbury to include and many of the other communities surrounding North Federal Island Borough. Some others have also given them letters for, I prepared a draft, it's in your packet, if you're considering.
And for motion, I'll make the motion, second.
Right there?
Yes.
Reese? Precious?
Yes.
In the unfinished business, the architectural services proposal, those that the last meeting did, uh, reengaged with Trump and Barr. We also had some, uh, other talk about, uh, USDA loan, whether or not we use that in the environmental review requirements. If you don't use the USDA loan. Um, Trump's better did come back with a revised proposal for architectural and engineering services. Can you see the amounts there? The original proposal was forty seven thousand seven hundred fifty, so this, uh, looks like a two thousand five hundred dollar reduction in their original proposal. And this would be for them to complete the, uh, feed our architect for the project.
I just, I just have a quick question. So this one, I understand, so the forty five thousand, that's gonna stay put no matter what. So if the cost of it goes up to, say, eight hundred and fifty thousand, it's still forty five thousand, that will not change.
Right, it's not based on the budget for the.
Oh, yeah, I'm just saying, that's, that's their fee, that's not, it's not gonna change no matter what.
But that doesn't mean there won't be any changes to that because you see in the proposal, they, they talk about other unforeseen, uh, or environmental review, and some other things might come up for which they would have provided. or environmental review, and some other things might come up for which they would have to provide additional services that will far be the standard, uh, description scope of work.
Yeah, yeah, it's always. No, no, that was just. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll make. And a motion, one more second, sorry.
Reese.
Yes.
Bruce.
Yes.
Thanks, Star. Right there.
Yes.
And this is, uh, Councilman Reese, uh, regarding a property near to the team firing company number one.
Okay, so, that was a approach, just everyone, uh, so he's got it there.
In the way.
Yeah, where are we at?
Third, third, right there, on the pop here.
Okay, yeah, there it is, okay. So, the property on the, on front of the one, where that trailer sits now, I remember a while back, there was a conversation back and forth, who was that was, and the assumptions that the city property, which never really did all the work to prove it. Either way, there's been high grasses come on there, and everyone took care of it, they poked it all down. But then also on the back of the property, that long patch, yes, exactly, right there, that's another piece that last year we had a conversation. We don't really know who owns that piece, we thought again that it could be the city, but in the, the map, it shows that it's the property owners of the, I think that's the lady right there, the, uh, storage, right there. So that's what it shows on the, I'm not sure if that's right. Either way, the ones is interested in potentially leasing both sides of it from the city and maintaining all of the grass. So, on the back half right now, the grass is really high, and last year was actually, the second was, you can tell you guys how, cut it all down, it took a while, it gets up there. Um, and they just need to have it gone to, uh, it's, it's high. So the thought is, they would maintain it, they would take care of it, it's not, because it's just a, like, lot space. Um, but I think first, we need to just allow the city engineers to actually research these, uh, because we don't know.
And though we have looked at that once before, there's a possibility that might still come, so.
It was, we don't know.
Or whatever has opened up, we're.
Yeah, so I think, I'm not asking you to do anything now, we're basically just letting you know that I was very interested in it. They have a, uh, at least for the front half, to clean it up and make it look nice on the back half, to at least take care of payments for us. Should they ever want to spend or accomplish the plans, or what they're gonna do over there. But, um, I think we just have to ask the engineer to be researching, uh, who owns those lots, so we can start with. So I think we have to know of that, unless there's any, unless there's any, uh, interest.
That parcel, it was deep as hell, it needs to park its railroad. And they had a clause in there, that one was there, abandoned from back, which were partly under, number one, built that building up, they didn't think it's a key. And that parcel was side of, uh, I know that came up as an issue, and that was a nice body shop, front street, there's a parcel, piece in there that sold off by the city, basically murdered back to the city. There's nobody came and claimed it, because everybody passed away and so forth, so. Gonna find out, heard it back to the city, told me they was spreading two parcels, dollar a year, you know, to do.
Yeah.
Let them maintain it, just some of the own part, you know.
The thought, they, they, they've already cleaned up the trailer that's out there, they proposed moving to the secondary, it's decided, you know, issues with what they wanna do, but they're making it look nice down there, there's a lot of work in the exterior of that building too, on that.
The only concern I would have is, uh, the, the officers that are in here now are, they're very proactive, that's what we want.
Yeah.
But once they change.
Well, I'm sure the leadership has the ability, that, funny, they're not maintaining the property, their property being placed, uh, and also they, they come back to us for any reason, I'm sure there's like.
I can make all revert back to the city, it's fine.
But that's what we created to, for, for, for the last four or five years, and they're, it's just still, it's, we have shipped out.
So.
Uh, next is the, uh, I was notified by Sudbury Municipal Authority, their unit tech engineering firm, uh, plan a base transfer station. Um, they're gonna be increasing the weekend collection system, gonna be installing tier weight system. They're gonna expand the group, so they have more undercover for unloading. And then, uh, the part that concerns us is the, um, increased permitted hours of operation to twenty-four seven. Now, they have no plans to actually operate twenty-four seven, but it does give them some flexibility on their hours. But BEP will require an acknowledgement from the city in order for them to approve the change to their permitted hours of operation. So, a letter from the city was requested, I did require it for consideration, if there's no objection, I'll just go ahead and, and just be that one. Okay.
You see, you see, the D B separate camps were great, that letter all fine. Right, apply for the.
Correct, right, the CDBG, C V is the COVID response related CDBG, uh, pot of money. Um, and that hearing starts at six P M. on their Ring Central, uh, CitaCox Ring Central virtual format. They will then, at six thirty, have the public meeting, this is the first public meeting for the CDBG entitlement money for F Y twenty twenty. And that's our annual CDB entitlement, so this is the same process that we do every year, same, same back channel. And then, um, the last announcement, Department Heritage scheduled a meeting for July twenty-third at six P M., we're gonna have it, weather permitting, in Cameron Park, if weather is not permitting, we'll come in right here. And then the next city council meeting, July thirteenth, being informed as we have right here, public may attend, maintaining social distance. And then, uh, we will also have the Zoom option available for this, which not, or prefer not to, that did first. What were your comments? Uh, first reading was the last, uh, meeting, and so on, second reading will be on July thirteenth.
July thirteenth, that's right.
I think, the noise, no, that passed.
The noise ordinance passed.
Yeah, that's right, that's what passed. Yeah, I'm sorry, I.
I love her that.
I mean, yeah.
I'm attempting to get the period scheduled, because of COVID, they were waiting for us to agree.
So the L C B, it's not a reason.
Well, no, they can't without a very public hearing, a very public hearing to be held here, and the, due to COVID restrictions, it was a problem, but as soon as we can get it done. So, thank you for your, for your.
Sure. Anything else?
Anybody that is on, online, have any comments, go ahead.
Yes, I do, this is Victoria Rosenkrenz.
Go ahead, Victoria.
Uh, you guys were just talking about fireworks, and, um, I have a concern, I had a concern, uh, last Fourth of July. My concern is that we are well aware of a business owner in our city that sells the fireworks. This, a business owner also does a display at the river on Fourth of July. My question is, so if you go across that river, river wall, am I correct in saying that that is, um, at the amphitheater or wherever over there, is that city property?
Yes.
Okay, so my question is, does this business owner get a, um, does he apply for something at the city to be able to do this display?
Yes.
Um, when he applies to do this, um, is there something in that, um, application that there is, uh, fire personnel present?
Yes.
They were not present last year, why was that?
By knowledge, they weren't there.
Well, I physically walked myself over there, and I asked every person that came out across that river wall, is there a fire truck over there? So my concern, fellas, please let, let me finish here, so my concern is this, so you just told me that that's city property. And why, so what is, what is the actual, um, application that he filled out?
Actually, the communal, yeah, the insurance, but our concern was.
So, okay, my concern here is, is that I'm hearing, last city council meeting, we spent a lot of time talking about five feet away from parking meters for businesses who are having people eat on the pavement. My concern is that, and liability is a big word that I hear a lot during these meetings, and my concern is, is that the liability of fireworks being set off over there, um, is there, you know, that fire apparatus is there, because all it takes is one of those fireworks, the fire in the wrong direction, and it happens. And then the city is gonna be responsible for that, correct?
No.
No?
How is the business, so I don't have insurance, you just said they supplies with insurance.
Okay.
And the one.
My other question is, so we have canceled River Fest, we have canceled Brews on the Lake, we've canceled a lot of things in our city, so. So, when we have groves of people going down to the river to watch fireworks.
Well, River Fest and Brews are not city-related, those are S R I, and that.
I understand that, my question is this, if he's setting off fireworks down at the river, and lots of people go down and watch them, because I live three houses in from Front Street. My other concern is that, I live three houses in from there, and one of those fire off in a wrong direction, that's my concern. My concern is that right now, we're dealing with COVID, things have been canceled, whether it's city or not, so I'm not gonna, you know, split hairs here. So, I guess, I guess what I'm being told is, he has insurance, and he's allowed to do a fireworks display on Fourth of July, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes.
Interesting, okay. Okay, that's all I have.
Mr. Whitwell, can I?
I'd like, I'd like to say something, whenever.
There was one more person on the, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Deb.
You ready for me, Jody?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, guys, um, my name is Deb Paust, and my concern is, I'm sick and tired of hearing these fireworks from Memorial Day all the way through Labor Day. The Fourth of July does not, that, they do not stop at the Fourth of July, it's getting annoying, but on my block, there's several neighbors who have dogs that are petrified of these fireworks. This has got to stop, I couldn't hear a lot of your meeting as to what you're doing, but I had a very nice officer, don't remember his name last night, speak with me. And, you know, I, I'm thankful for, you know, him taking the time out to listen to me. Um, I've lived here fifteen years, and, you know, I live alone, and they're annoying, I'm sixty years old almost, they're annoying, it's gotta stop. The immaturity, and I did hear some fellows say, they were down here on Fourth and Walnut, I knew they were awful close to my house when I called the nine-one-one dispatch. I'm gonna keep doing it until someone does something about it, because it's gotta stop, it just has to stop. There is a time for this, not all four months, you know, not, not four months, you know, I can see a week, or I can see, um, like, Memorial Day weekend, the, the week of the Fourth of July, and maybe Labor Day weekend, that's it, that's it, that is enough, is enough. You know, I, I go to bed, you know, nine, nine, nine-thirty at night, I don't need to be not able to sleep, because all these idiots out shooting off fireworks, M-80s and whatever else. It's just ridiculous, you know, I mean, it's, it's gotta stop somewhere.
Ms. Paust, this is Chief Harris, I agree with you, I agree with you a wholeheartedly. And I think Councilman Reese has addressed it, that we are gonna sit down, I will work with the, the city council, the mayor, and the administration's office, and we'll try to think of something for next year. It's too late for this year, unfortunately, but we'll definitely, we're gonna be addressing it, it does need to be addressed, we know that.
Well, I feel sorry for the puppies, my puppy died that didn't like fireworks, she had dementia, and she passed away. So, you know, I, I don't have dogs, but my neighbor lady next to me, the lady that works down at the Americas, her German Shepherd ate a hole through the wall out here on the forest because of these crazy fireworks, I mean, I feel for them, and they wonder why dogs run away. You know, they're trying to get away from the noise. You know, I mean, I'm trying to be reasonable, I understand, you know, I, I wanna see people have fun, especially because of the COVID, but not four months in a row, five, six, seven days a week. It's just gotta stop, and thank you, you know, Officer Harris, appreciate it, you know, but I understand it is too late, but there's just gotta be something done.
All right, thank you, Deb, appreciate it.
Yep, thanks, Jody, thanks, Officer Harris, appreciate it.
Don't comment, uh, hanging in the streets in Sudbury, I don't know who to talk to about, but Susquehanna Avenue is horrible. It's, it's worse than Srofford, you drive up and down there, now, I'm, I'm not sure what's caused it, but it could be the former, prioritized underneath that street. But when you, you, you're driving up and down, you have an older person, not, not me, but you have an older person, very loose control of cars up and down that street, is that wrong? You have the same thing right out here in Second Mark, I, I don't know why it's been that way for years, they just seem to ignore it. Why can't we do something with it, that's the one question. The other one is, at night, with, uh, bakery up there on Back Street, they can get off Front Street, they won't stop, they can stop Front Street, right on through. Someone's gonna get hit with a kill. Why can't we address those people? Bakery company, tell that people to stop, the damn stop sign, that's why the bakery, that's my comment.
Susquehanna, put money into that now, that's a project plan, and that's on my list, last year, it's on my, I'm probably, I'll just.
Uh, Mr. Whitwell. Yes. Susquehanna is one of the faces on the project, which we started here this fall on Reagan, okay? And as you said, the washroom, it's the old brick, uh, pavement underneath that catalog there, and the same with Second Mark, you know, that we referred to?
Yes.
It's also the old brick in there.
I didn't know if the brick were from when the track.
Well, the track came down and went out toward the front, but that intersection caused the brick, and we did fix it, push it, tear everything back out, and rebuild it from scratch. And Susquehanna is on the list to be done, because they're gonna put a new, uh, sewer line up, Susquehanna Avenue, where we both should be the same time. We have second sewers, actually still on, draw a track, there is, I may remember that the last time I saw, there is a corner, but you know, that was probably stuffed in there.
Well, I, I know that probably years ago, you used to run down Susquehanna Avenue, my grandfather would take a car, so it is there.
And the stop sign thing, Mr. Whitwell, I will get a hold of manager there and tell. So, I think the stop sign.
I'm concerned somebody's gonna get hit with a kill, because they do not stop, they sometimes slow down, but sometimes they don't even do that. But me working weekends like I do, I see it, and I know the leaves can't be everywhere, I understand, I'm not blaming you, Deb.
Awesome, awesome.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else?
What about your buddy? Last year, we had a, here, was, in the, in the, where I room, to talk about the community values, and Mr. Weinberger, he said, for twenty years, he tried to bring the community college here on the subway, so, please tell him to put proofs, he tried for twenty years. He tried to pour the four drugs, the penny of the doubt, and he blamed the police officers, he give it, he give it bicycles to, to them, you know, on the kids, the policemen, and figure out if he give it bicycles to the police, what he's giving the other politicians, Cadillacs, Mercedes, I don't know. No, he said, he said before, the last year, for the, for the, for the, for the police station, all right, to, to train like the, train buildings. And when I say, I'm trying for twelve years to be the community college, he came in and said, he tried for twenty years. But also he said for sixty properties, because he was a salesman for twenty years, and I wanna do. And I wanna know, he paid third price for any of the dollar for those populations. Even about the, about the building, he buy the elementary school, right? What, before the auction, the radio advertised the elementary schools, that's in, uh, no, no ready for classes, better for classes. Who's gonna buy the school if the radio say that?
He bought that for the smallest.
Yeah, he bought for the best, but how much did that build cost?
I mean, there was an auction on that.
It was an auction, but if the radio advertised the schedules for the, for the classes, who's gonna build the building? If the radio participated, the conspiracy, the, the corruption, the, the, the year, why they bought the building? Especially for the for the mayor officers say to me, you can make a medical and you can make a warehouse. Now I find out for the medical, the ex-mayor, Jesse Carter over there, the medical. When you take a public office, you help the salary or you try to help yourself? Any mayor or a customer taken the place to help the public. And I never did before. This lady, I want publish a newspaper for the kids because everybody say they got, you say rights. Yes, I believe we got the same rights, but we got the same responsibilities, okay? And to have the responsibility supposed to educate because if you got education is power, okay? And I helped you was to put a newspaper to inform the public because the education does the piece of, of the progress. I don't got nothing for the, for this officer, this is delicate police officer because I remember one night and, uh, Hanwin, you remember, you run up and down my pity like a crazy. The intruders, they don't come from outside, they come for next baby, Minga morning. And I asked the, the best education for FBI, for the sugar carries and the witches may benefit for that to, to succeed and make a progress without, without the sweat. And the ex-mayor? He wasn't proactive because you remember once the lady complained that got the bar across the street, the Chinese coming and taking the bike in for my customers. And taking pictures, pictures, no buying nothing. She opened the afternoon, the Chinese coming and the daytime, they don't bother her. And after the Chinese destroyed by somebody put roaches of the, ropes of the, and they left. That's the American dream, to sabotage one the other. I asked the FBI to reverse against the ex-mayor. Because the time I get here, and I tell Mr. Mayor, I'm the owner of the 370 market street, so what? And one lady say, is Chinese state right in the bank? We changed the rules tomorrow, no parking the buses. Why they chase? They ask, he asked the customers to change the rules for the parking? No, I think so. Okay?
You're talking about something six years old.
Six years old, but like I was saying, with the ex-mayor Jesse did that. And they tell you for the port office, you can rent the medical and warehouse. For the medical, I don't know why they tell me, but for the medical, I find out he started the medical, I can't be going there.
I'm not sure, Mr. Dean, was medical building where?
Police is now. You know how the medical, uh, pretty over there? Before?
No, no, it's a church building.
I don't know, but they tell me, you can rent it and the medical and no warehouse. Why? Man, man, you, you, the man is the gate, I know you, and you say to knock it down, my bitch, make the parking right. That's saying because you don't have a design for it, you don't have a design for it, you can only put parking.
Is there a question? Is there a question?
Let's, let's not.
Oh, I saw you last night, I saw you last night, say the, the roof. Yeah, tell them, when he said, Mr. Mayor do not get down to building because you don't need those schools, we got schools. I see you, I see you.
Mr. Dean, I, I, I'm not quite sure. The building, when the police station was, was.
It was nothing wrong with the police station, I don't complain about the police station, that person, the police, that's a fair play now. But when I bought the building, they say to me, you can't rent it and the medical and no warehouse, why?
You don't have the zoning.
And now, and now, no parking. Yeah, shoot, why you chasing parking rooms?
So you're upset that you can't rent that repetitive facility or warehouse in the city?
Yes, sir.
Then you got the laws about that, at least you got it to type it.
Yeah. Why, why they tell me that?
When did they?
After, after 12 years, after 12 years, I, I found the positives for that because it was a medical place of the.
Oh, God, I'm not interested, I'm impressed.
I know, but the newspaper, I don't know, uh, they make it wrong, they make it purpose. They put the others, the small stores for free and they call me and come and rent the place for free.
He said it was free for 10 years.
Maybe, only other one is more free.
Oh, we didn't, I don't, I don't even remember that, I mean, from my understanding.
No, you're right.
Yeah, we, no, we, I'm just, no, no, I know, I'm recent, we were just, from my understanding, we went through, I was virulently referring to that building, not the building behind you. That's a different.
They come and call me for free, this one store, the night's not for free.
I mean, that was, yes, that was, from my understanding, I don't remember ever, like, that's what we all want to do. You have someone that wants to move it up and, and for a warehouse except.
And the other thing, we plant the president, we plant, the Democrats plant the president is legislative, okay? Look what happened. I read it for me because maybe you laugh or not read it, we don't mind this.
I mean, I, I read, I prefer not to read, I just.
Yeah.
What, what is it?
The black people supposed to.
It's, it's.
To exterminate like a, why, uh, we.
We brought a lot of.
She say, she say, she's Democrat, she's a Republican, pray for her, her population, and things like that, that's a hypocrite.
So, Mr. Dean, so I guess, like, we're, we're, our question, so you're saying, so for your building, there are markets, you got the back, front, which is the bottom? So you're.
Medical, so I tell them, for the, for the political project, you wanna be free for a year. And to take them for 10 years for free, to fix it. You try to bring in my youth and destroy me because I'm outside? Come on, give me, okay, I said, Mr. Mayor, that's, I'm the owner of the 370 market, so what?
Yeah, I mean, like, so I, I guess my question now is, so you were approached by individuals, like, you wanted to put medical and there's no warehouse?
Yeah, they got coming, rich guy, he's excessive, open them, it's a poster.
Was this, was this just recent or is this in the past?
The past.
Okay.
The newspaper for the, and you know, wasn't free and what I tell them to make, they use still call me on. You know, that's, that's, that's false information, you know?
Can we just pop?
Yes, sir. So I wanna be here with you and discuss because I love this country, I'm 50 years here and you see what happens, everybody asks for it for, uh, the rights, but nobody asked for the responsibilities, okay? I hear they make it black holiday, very good, good election, but we got the seminar eyes and seminar staff activities, no going and break in the stores. And, uh, making.
I gotta cut you off here, sir, you're, you're getting into a position you can't talk about.
Okay, you can't talk about, uh, the, the president's. Okay.
All right, all right.
But, uh, I had the FBI in Miami because one lady got the bar over there, they say, it's a game, the Chinese come and take a picture, picture, and nobody got a right store.
No, Mr. Dean, it's me.
But so we changed the rules, they don't let the Chinese to park in the mirrors. And after you, you guys later, they put the cash register in the, in the grocery store.
Anything else, anyone else?
Sure.